Welcome to the Town of Parker Town Council Meeting for November 20th. I am going to reconvene the Parker Town Council Meeting at 7:04 PM. Council, please sign in. All council members are present with the exception of Councilman Josh Martin, who is out on vacation. Do I have a favor to ask? Anyone in the audience who's friends with Councilman Josh Martin? Go onto social media when we're done and call him a punk, call him all sorts of... He's in Florida right now on the beach. You know, and he's making it a point every day to post pictures of the beach and the sun and all that kind of jazz. So, uh, give him a hard time.
Give him some love.
Give him some love. Alright, so, um, special presentation, or before we get to that actually, we have the most important part of the meeting. Scouts, could you all come down? We have a bunch of scouts in the audience, so if you're some of the scouts I met with outside, or you just happen to be a scout here tonight, come on down. Boy scout, girl scout, cub scout, brownies, whatever, come on down. Come on down, right up front, right up front. You guys are gonna lead us in the most important part of the meeting tonight, and that is the Pledge of Allegiance. So here's how it's gonna work. We're gonna turn around and face the flag. I want you guys to do the Pledge of Allegiance, but everyone behind you is gonna wait until they hear you start. So it's important that you guys start and not just sit here and let it be quiet. Can you guys do that?
Yeah.
You can use your outside voice. It's like, can you guys do that?
Yeah.
Alright, so with that, the floor is yours, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome job, way to go, guys! Alright. Yeah, exactly. We, that's a little, little psychological experiment to always see which scout is the one who actually starts with the pledge, you know? Cause they just kinda sit there for a sec going, who's gonna go? Alright, so next up, um, we have some special presentations. Raise your hand if you guys are here because you are either in the Civic Academy or you're here representing someone who is in the Civic Academy as a guest. Oh, we got a bunch of people, alright, so I'm actually, I'm actually gonna step down here, council, if you don't mind. So for those of you who are watching on social media, everyone turn around and say hi to Tom, he's running the camera in the back there. Everyone watching on social media, for those of you in the audience who have no idea what we're about to do, the Town of Parker has several programs to engage its citizens in the Town of Parker, and what we do here, one of them is our Civic Academy. And so, tonight is the graduation of those men and women in Parker who decided to step forward, be part of the program, to learn about what it takes to run the Town of Parker. It's one of the things that's somewhat unique in the Town of Parker that we have these programs available, because everyone knows that whatever community you live in, the thing you like to do is complain that things aren't going the way you want them to go, or you might not know why certain decisions are made. But being part of the Civic Academy, you learn how this organization operates. And it's really important to realize, cause with an organization like this that has an annual budget of around $125 million, and we represent fifty, about 52,000 citizens, well, how are those decisions being made? What, what return on that investment do our citizens get? Well, you'll learn that at the Civic Academy. Guess what the best part is? It's free, right? It is free, right? Yeah, you guys get a bill at the end of this party. And all this. So, we have the graduation tonight of those who participated after we're done with the council meeting, and I encourage everyone to please stay through the council meeting. They have a short part meeting after that, we're gonna have a reception out in the hallway as well, with cake and lots of ways to get your kids sugared up and have a good time. So, I'm gonna go ahead and call down those graduates who are here tonight. Come forward, I'm gonna shake your hand, give you your certificate, and I'll just hang you out up here, so we can acknowledge you all at once, alright? So Mike Appleby, come on down. The one in the hardest spot to get out of is the first one that I called. Price is Right, watch your steps on all of these. I have seen people take diggers down on them. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Pam Brooks. Hey, center section's doing good tonight. Thank you very much. Chris Buck, I know Chris, where's there he is, sitting over there. Hey, Chris, congratulations. Chris, Chris just got elected to the Stroh Ranch HOA Board. Sucker! I live in Stroh Ranch, so congratulations, and I go to Chris. Omar, Omar, come on down. Where did I, oh, right up front, I didn't even see him sit there. I noticed, you know, the bow tie, and that's why. Thanks Omar. There you go, buddy. Sharon Calburn. You can see her over there, hiding. Good seeing ya. Let's see here, is it Marcia DeBel?
Yep.
Alright. Does people go like Marcia?
Yes.
Say things like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a trendsetter. Alright, and this is Ryan Ditterman. Come on down, dude. It's kinda weird when we have employees who go through. Ryan's our, uh, he's our social, social media guru here as well. Elizabeth Donahue. Congratulations. Eric Dunn. Need like, lead on music, it's really like, like Jock Jams or something. Congratulations. Barbara Fazio. Now while they're up here, they don't know what congratulations, there's gonna be a text at the end, and if they don't pass it, they have to give their certificates back. Let's see, Asha? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
Todd Hendrick, well you can just set this aside, I don't know. Are you sure he made it through?
That's the room.
That's the room, good job. Lydia, Lydia Copper or Coper? Either way?
Yeah.
Copper's good enough, whoa, careful. I'm telling those steps, congratulations. I've seen more people fall down those than our risk manager grabs at his heart every time. Chara Kurtz? Did I get that right, or did I mess that up too? Chara, Chara?
It's Chara.
Chara, oh, I didn't even get close to that, I thank you. Congratulations. Matthew Kurtz, I can't, I can't get that one right, my son's name is Matthew, so.
Kurtz.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Brenda Lauer? We've got nobody from this side of the room, I guess everyone's somewhere. Y'all sat together? There you go. Randall? Philabon?
Philabon.
Philabon, there we go, that's easy. It looked scary, but it's easy, right? Congratulations. Barry, the tennis man riddle, come on down. I taught Barry all he knows about tennis. Congratulations, buddy. Fiona Scoville. You know the Scoville scale, you know what that is, right? You probably, that's how hot you are, I was gonna make. Sherry, come on down. I wasn't gonna call you Sheree this time, but one more employee, in fact, Sherry's the one who keeps me in line and the rest of the council in line, so. Come on up, this is, these are your graduates from this year's city. All people in the back, sure people don't run. Now I'm gonna come back to you. I'll send a hyphenic.
Alright, everybody? One, two, and three. Take a couple more. One, two, three. And one, two, and three.
Alright. One more, uh, quick presentation here. So, hey, Sherry? Danette? Hold on.
Just slow down.
Now's where you have to pay the bill.
I didn't fix my hair.
So funny.
On behalf of the 2017 Civic Academy class? That's nasty.
Excellent, now that is fantastic, and well worth it. The Town of Parker has over 800 incredible, amazing employees. We really are fortunate to be in this community, but Danette and, and Sherry really do keep this group in line. If, if I didn't have the emails that I get from them saying, "Don't forget, you have like five meetings tomorrow," I would miss everything. So they do a wonderful job, and, uh, this, the Citizens Academy is just another example of that. So, congratulations to everybody. Alright, next item on our agenda is our Parker Chamber of Commerce update. I actually received a message from Dennis Houston before coming in, and they're interviewing for a couple new positions, or interviewing a couple of people for a new position tonight, and he wasn't able to come down for that, so we're gonna skip over that. Next item on our agenda is our public comment session. This is for, uh, general public comment on items that are not currently on our agenda. If you're here for an item on our agenda, there'll be an opportunity for public comment at that time. So this is just general public comment on things not on our agenda, no action will be taken. Each person has a three-minute time limit, you're gonna see above me, there is a can, or a clock, I've got one across the way as well. You come up, state your name and address for the record, you start your public comment. When it gets to three, when it gets down to zero, I'm not being rude, but I'll say thank you very much and invite the next person up. So with that, we'll open it up for general public comment at 7:14 PM, if there's anyone here to address council. Scouts? No? Alright, seeing none? We're gonna close public comment at 7:15 and move on to reports, items and comments from mayor and council. Let's start with Amy.
Uh, this past week, I did attend the National League of Cities City Summit Conference that was held in Charlotte. We had over 3,000 elected officials and staff members as well, who all met. It was a, it was a very intense conference, full of great information. Uh, we met in smaller groups, large groups, to discuss issues as far as, you know, what are our challenges? What were our successes? How did we achieve those? And so it was nice to really share that, uh, in some of those group sessions. I also attended on behalf of the Centennial Airport Community Noise Roundtable as well. There's several issues that are coming up as far as, uh, some changes that may be coming through the FAA in regards to the Metroplex and other things that have been happening in other states, and so that was a, a pretty large focus of mine there as well. So, that's, that's where I was last week, and I haven't had much sleep in the past five to six days, so, I'm not sure if we've been getting any this week either though, but, so, that's about all I have to share right now.
Josh?
Uh, just a couple things, we had the, uh, Chair of the Douglas County Youth Initiative, which is a committee underneath the Douglas County Partnership of Governments, and we had our annual retreat right here in Town Hall, it was our turn. Fabulous, found direction for the following, the coming year, and, uh, got some new exciting things coming up, and it's about it for that. And then also, in this very same room, Pioneer Elementary, third grade, had a field trip to Town Hall, and they spent an hour or so in here, and the mayor and I, and, uh, Town Administrator Kivola, and Police Chief King talked to them about their town organization, and it's always great to, uh, to look into the minds of, uh, third graders and find out what they think about local government, and it's just fascinating. They, they really, really enjoyed it, and I, I enjoyed speaking with them.
Excellent. Renee?
I've been a little bit out of the loop the last couple of weeks, I've been sick and my 97-year-old grandmother passed away, so, um, I did attend the Chamber Business Impact Meeting, John also attended that with me, and it was regarding aerospace, aerospace in Colorado, and it was presented by Joe Rice from Lockheed Martin, and they also made the Chamber Board announcements at that meeting.
Oh, uh, we've not done this in, uh, several weeks. Um, I, um, have to say that I was not at the Impact Meeting because I attended the, the town's, uh, Thanksgiving luncheon, and I, since he is here, I just would like to point out that if you ever wanna know how to make a green bean casserole that will, um, make your eyes water, talk to Chris Hudson.
Wait, clarify. Clarify that, yeah, is that, is that what I wanna eat, or is that what I don't wanna eat?
It was good, but I was not expecting two cans of jalapenos to be in the green bean.
Attaboy, attaboy.
Yeah, my, I, yeah, I was crying, but it was good, it was good. Uh, well attended, of course, as usual, all the food was wonderful. I, on that same day, uh, at the Pace Center, uh, it was hosted by the Chamber, the Sip and Shop. Say that three times. Uh, it, it was a beautiful presentation by all the, uh, small businesses that, uh, presented there, uh, lots of, lots of different venues, it was well attended. Uh, we all, all, a good many of us attended the Partnership of Douglas County Government, our, uh, annual meeting with all the representatives of the different jurisdictions, including our state, uh, representatives. Uh, I had a Douglas County Housing Partnership Meeting, and I don't, cause they're on the papers from two weeks ago, on how many loans have, have closed this year already. And then I attended, uh, a Parker Arts Event, where we, we hosted, uh, the, the host and hostess had a three-person, uh, act, uh, musical act, and that was an event held to help inform people about, uh, the Family Circle memberships, and that, it was really well attended. I think that's all I have.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, uh, I had a board meeting for the Denver Regional Council of Governments, otherwise known as Dr. Cog. Uh, I am the, the town board member, uh, we talked a few things, uh, we approved the 2018 budget, and we, uh, discussed, uh, a resolution supporting first responder safety, which, uh, the town, uh, is, is, is for, and is, uh, Item J on our consent agenda. Uh, I also attended, uh, last Friday, the Denver South Economic Development Partnership Annual Luncheon with, uh, I believe it's Catty Kay from, uh, BBC, and, uh, Senator Gardner was there as well, and it was just a who's who of, of, of who, who is developing and who is, uh, serving in the South Metro Area. I think we had about over 400 people there in attendance. So it was a, it was a good event, uh, and that is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Alright, Josh, you had something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I forgot. Uh, Tim, uh, uh, Legend Teacher Tim Florian's government class came and met me at a local business, and I got to speak to, uh, 30 high school kids about local government, and I thought it was absolutely fascinating. I say this all the time, and it's the truth, we, we just say today's youth, ugh, they're just, where are we gonna go, and, and what are we gonna do? I get encouraged every time I, I sit in a room with these guys. They're brilliant, they're young, they're quick, they're witty, and, uh, they've got great questions, and they've got great ideas. It's, it's nice to hear a, a simplified idea once in a while, and they really, really, it was a great class, and I really, really learned a lot from them.
Excellent, excellent. So I had a, a bit of a, a packed agenda over the last couple of weeks as well. Um, I had Career Day at Sagewood Middle School, uh, got to talk about being mayor there. I did attend the Sip and Shop from the Chamber of Commerce, it was at the Pace Center, a good opportunity for local citizens to come in and spend some money with local, small vendors and businesses. Uh, my wife spent a bunch of money there, Debbie did too, so, uh, that's always good. Uh, was honored again to get, to attend the Veterans', um, Celebration at Cimarron Middle School. I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm gonna be quite honest, now keep in mind, both my kids went to Sagewood, my wife teaches at Sagewood, both my kid, one graduated from Pondo, one goes to Pondo, definitely, you know, a fan of the Pondo feeder, so I'm not trying to, you know, jump ship or anything, but the kids at Cimarron who put together this Veterans' Day, um, Assembly every year, if you have not been, you have to put it on your schedule and you have to show up. It's one of the most powerful events I've ever been to in my life, this was probably, I think, my fifth one of going, and they, it's put on by the kids, they organize it, the consumer and family kids bake, um, cinnamon rolls to give to the veterans, they, the, they videotape it, it's an incredible experience, and they take, uh, every conflict in the United States from the Civil War, and take it up to modern days and honor the veterans that are there. It's powerful, especially when this year, um, only one veteran from World War II was left. You know, every year, it's less and less, and when you stop to kinda think about that, that, I mean, when I started going to this five or six years ago, I think there was 13 veterans from World War II who showed up, and it's just, it's a very powerful thing, so I highly encourage you guys to go to it. Just get there really early, cause parking is awful, but it's a really good event. I got to, I was on, um, I got, I was asked to be on a panel discussion board with a company called Vantiv that's up in, uh, the tech center. Vantiv is, I think, a Fortune 100 company, uh, that has, uh, head, or their headquarters are actually, I think, like in Grand Junction, but they have offices all over the, the world, and it was a, a panel discussion on diversity in organizations. And I got to be on the panel with a gentleman who runs, the, the CEO of the Asian Chamber of Commerce in Denver, uh, the CEO of an organization who places blind, uh, tech workers. It's really cool, and then a, a woman who does, uh, female tech plate, job placements as well, and how, uh, diversity affects the organization. Great, um, great opportunity. Um, I also spoke, or got to go to and speak at the Police's Citizens Academy, we just had our Citizens Academy graduation here, we also have a Police Citizens Academy, so if you guys haven't take, signed up for that yet, you, you should sign up for that, because you get to see how the Police Department runs as well. Do they get to shoot guns too? Isn't there a point you get to shoot?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, if you wanna shoot some guns, that's, that's the way to do it, guys, right?
Do they still do the video?
The simulator?
Yeah, it's, it's a great, great experience, so go through that. Uh, Pioneer Elementary School here was great, great and powerful as well, I got to speak to the second graders at Cherokee Trail. I've spoken with kids from pre-K all the way through college, and I, there's, each has a time, um, you know, the pre-K's, you got about 90 seconds before you lose them. Second grade, it's a mix between why can't my dad put his boat on Ruder Hesch Reservoir, and what color socks are you wearing? So it's kind of, it's, it's, it's always good though, to see what the kids have to bring up. Um, I got to take pictures with one of the foundations that I'm really, means a lot to me, my oldest son, when he was, um, in, uh, third grade, his best friend passed away, who, they were at Legacy Point Elementary, and his mom started a, his name was Harry, and Harry's mom, Mia, started a foundation called the Harry Samora Foundation, after that, where every year, they raise toys, generate toys, and she takes the toys on Christmas Day to the children's hospital, uh, because he passed away, um, during Christmas time. And, uh, this was the start of the season, so we actually had the young, young Mrs. Colorado, a girl who was in second grade, who raised some toys in her class, brought it to Mia's house, and we took pictures together with the toys as the starting point, cause at the end of the season, I'm hoping we have enough toys to completely fill her ground floor. So if you guys wanna bring new, unwrapped toys, you can bring them by my office or bring them by Town Hall, and we'll get it taken care of there as well. Preemptively, I wanna let you guys know that I look forward to seeing you all this Friday, 5:30 to 7:00 PM, at O'Brien Park is the mayor's holiday lighting. Some changes, if you didn't come last year, and you've come in the past, the lights turn on at the beginning this year, we usually wait to the very end to turn on the lights, the lights go on at 5:30, so get there early, cause there's all sorts of fun stuff going on for the rest of the night. First time I did it, I thought there'd be maybe 300 people in O'Brien Park, and it was about 5,000 people in O'Brien Park. It's a fun, fun time, the weather's supposed to be nice, and also make sure you mark Saturday, December 9th, at noon in your calendar, that is the Town of Parker Christmas Carriage Parade here in downtown. I will not be on the, on the, the carriage with these, with these fine individuals, because Kathy Saban and I will be the announcers at the beginning of the parade, and that starts at, uh, the library, the new library, so.
Can you give us that for a second?
I know, Kathy, Kathy Saban said she'd only do the gig if I did it with her, so I'm just like...
Did we vote on this?
No, I don't know, yeah, I don't know if that's true or not. But, it's a fun time, so make sure you come to that, so. Alright, with that, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine, they'll be enacted with one motion and one vote, unless a council member asks to have an item removed for further discussion and individual vote. So council, with that, we have Consent Agenda Items 6A through 6K.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 6A through K with the removal of Item I for a separate vote.
Second. We have a motion from Amy, and a second from Josh. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, uh, Item I.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Item I.
Mayor, if I may make a point, um, this item, uh, deals with Riada North Metro District, and I live in Riada North Metro District, so it's my opinion that I should abstain, since I could directly benefit from this refinance.
We have a motion from Amy, and a preemptive abstention from Josh. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes with one abstention. So hey, Civic Academy members, how come you didn't see my name light up, up there, when those two votes just happened?
They can't vote.
There we go, mayor can't vote. If you didn't know that, in the Town of Parker, the mayor doesn't get to vote on stuff. I'm an impartial member of this board, I gotta make sure they're not fist fighting up here, but I don't get to vote on things. So, next item up is Item Number 7, this is our Town Administrators Report. Michelle, do you have anything else to add to your report?
Actually, I went over that at the first night of the Civic Academy, and in fact, they got to do a mock council meeting, so I'm kinda curious, I'll be asking at the reception if how we did with the mock council meeting compared to the real thing.
Compared to the real, oh, they're gonna be, they're gonna be like, this was just like a clown show compared to what they did, right? So.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Alright, excellent. If you guys have not been to our website and checked out our Town Administrators Report, shame on you, you should do it regularly. Once a quarter, Michelle updates a report to our citizens on what's going on around town. Great place to see stuff. Alright, let's get to the meat and potatoes of things. Next item is Item Number 8, these are our public hearings. First item, 8A, is a public hearing for Ordinance Number 1.493.5 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2017 revised budget for the Town of Parker, and to make appropriations for the same. Now, Rhonda, you're gonna give the presentation, not Mary Lou?
I am talking about this year's budget, the revision.
Alright.
She will be talking about next year's.
Rock and roll. Both your names are down, I was just curious.
So yes, it's my turn on this one. The purpose of this budget revision is to appropriate additional funds for the 2017 budget, and to correct an error for the transfer that went to the cultural fund, that should have come from the excise tax fund instead of the general fund. This revision is also reflecting the town's agreement with the 911 Authority regarding the police communications capital equipment that was originally budgeted in the general fund. The 911 Authority is procuring the equipment directly, instead of reimbursing the town, so this will reduce the general fund expenditures and revenue by $800,000. The total supplemental appropriation for 2017 is to reduce expenditures by $48,096, offset by $442,500, increase in revenue for a net of $490,596 reduction. The increase of expenditures includes $300,000 in the public, and, sorry, in the Parks and Recreation Fund, $391,904 in the Recreation Fund, $781,900 in the Excise Tax Fund, and $49,000 in the Facilities Services Fund. There is also a reduction of $1,570,900 of expenditures in the general fund. The revenue includes an increase of $1,505,500 in the Recreation Fund, and a decrease of $609,000 in the general fund. So numbers are going up and down, up and down, in all the different funds, but the total impact of the revision includes a net increase of cash of $490,596. This includes an expense reduction of $48,000, and a revenue increase of $442,000.
Excellent. Council, do you have any questions? I have a question for Chris. Chris, none of our compute monitors have anything that's going, is, do you have anything up there? No? Okay, I didn't, I can only see the bottom edge of the screen through the reflection, and there's a little bit of light on it, and I didn't know if there was something up above us. No, okay, never mind then. Alright, no questions from council, then we'll open, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:31 PM. And seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:31, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 1.493.5 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh, and a second by Amy. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is 8B, this is Ordinance Number 1.507 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2018 budget for the Town of Parker, and to make appropriations for the same. Mary Lou?
Good evening, and I need to make a clarification to some of the people behind me, because last time they saw me present, they both got money and food, so, I have nothing tonight.
That's how we do it in Parker, you show up.
And I'm sorry that you get to listen to the budget presentation, so. We are going to go through the, uh, budget presentation tonight, this is the second hearing for it, so we're going to go ahead and start. First of all, a couple of the important budget dates that have occurred, we have had one public hearing on November 6th, this is the second public hearing with approval on November 20th. We also have hearings on the property tax levy, it'll be introduced tonight, and then approved on December 4th.[1753.01] So getting into the actual numbers, we, I kind of always like to lay out where we are to have some sense of where we're going. And so this slide actually takes a look at our 2016 actual results and then also our amended budget prior to the changes that Rhonda just went through. And then also a projection of our 2017 that was put together back at the end of August. These numbers will continue to move around for the projections and we'll see where they end up, but they were the basis for the start of our 2018 budget presentation. The numbers, as you'll note, for the projected numbers are actually better than what our amended budget would show that we're going to be at. So we always have those situations where revenue doesn't match exactly and we have changes in what we're spending our money for as far, in addition to the timing on it. If we look at some highlights for our general fund from 2017, first of all, we are looking at growth in revenue of about 9% on a year-over-year basis. This is tremendous growth for the community and it drives a lot of the revenue for all of the necessary services and projects that we have. Our sales tax is also growing at about 9% back in this time. We're seeing that taper off a bit now, but the projections at that point were a 9% for 2017. We have seen some reductions on our, the expenditure side. We're looking at a little more than $2 million reduction in our expenses. Those expenses encompass all areas of appropriations, our operations, capital and the transfers. And a good note, we had quite a conversation during an earlier study session around ending cash and we right now are looking at, it's in excess of 25%, I think it's 26% of our working capital, our cash balance for the year as compared to our total budgeted expenditures. So we feel like we're in very good shape that way. If we take a couple minutes then and look at some of our other funds, our Parks and Recreation Fund is also seeing some good growth related to the sales tax growth. That fund receives five, or half a cent of the sales tax for the town and that money is dedicated to this fund. They've had three large projects that have been underway and are either continuing or have been completed during 2017. One of our other major funds is the cultural fund and we've had an increase in our transfers to that fund primarily due to some capital projects. The schoolhouse annex is scheduled to be completed in 2018 and then the restoration of the schoolhouse itself is scheduled to be completed this year. So those capital expenditures related to those two projects are in this fund. That takes us then to our look at what 2018 is going to bring. And again, we start with our 2016 actuals, our projections for 2017, and then they requested our budgeted amounts for 2018. As we started this process, and I have to tell you, it's been five months ago, almost six, and that seems like a lifetime ago at this point. As we started though, we were very much aware that we were not going to be able to accommodate all of the requests that came in from the departments. So while we had many of our departments scale back in their requests as they came in, we also did some reductions after budgets were submitted. So it was a very heartfelt time, I think, here at Town Hall and I think we did some great work. As we entered that time though, we had kind of a three-pronged philosophy that we used in approaching the development of the budget. One was we wanted to maintain our cash balance and not continue to use our cash balance for one-time items. So on this slide, if you look at the cash at the end of 2017 and 18, you'll see that they are very similar. We also wanted to continue the recognition of our employees through our strong compensation plans that we have in place. I'll talk about those in a little bit. And then we also took the philosophy that we should maintain our current FTE, which is full-time equivalent or our employee count for 2018 and it should stay the same as 2017. So now let's take a little bit more look at our 2018 numbers. Again, we're going to start with the general fund. We have five revenue items that make up about 83% of our revenue. These are the top three with the main one being sales tax. The two that I've not included on the slide are our road and bridge shareback and our highway user tax. Probably the one that catches your eye the most is that 12.9% growth on real property taxes. That growth is being driven by the reassessment that Douglas County Assessor has completed for the year. We've had preliminary numbers. I'm expecting the final numbers yet this week, but the preliminary numbers indicated that we should see just under a 13% growth in the property tax that we collect next year. Moving on then, we have two ways that we can look at our expense. One of those is by department. And with this split out of departmental expense, you can see that over 50%, I guess it's about 58% of the general fund revenue that comes in goes to support two of our very core departments, Public Works and the Police Department. These two departments consist of a lot of the core projects and services that the citizens of the town expect the town to provide. The other way to look at our expenses is to look at it by type of expenditure. And here you can see that we spend about 45% of our total general fund revenue on salary and benefits and then another 35% on our purchased services. Those two combined make up about 80%. I can tell you that a good portion of the purchased services number is our, reflects our contracts with outside companies that help provide the services that the town provides. So this slide goes into a little bit more information around the challenge that we faced. We have kept growth in the general fund on the expenditure side, operating expenditure side to a 2.4% growth. This compares to the fact that the CIP for the Denver Boulder area for the first six months of the year increased 3.1%. So right there, we've had to shave off some growth in expenditures. And then we also have implemented in this budget a 4% pay-for-performance increase for our employees. So taking those increases into effect gives you some sense as far as the challenges that we faced as we put this budget together. Again, we focused a lot on personnel or our employees for the town. We are maintaining the number of employees at 244. We've retained a strong commitment to our employees with that 4% pay-for-performance amount. And that includes both pay-for-performance and then we have step and range increases that take place within the Police Department. One of the other fantastic benefits that we provide to our employees is for those employees who elect to participate in the town's healthcare program. If they sign up for the employee-only status, they do not contribute to the premium for healthcare. So we have maintained that at the zero-dollar level also. So from there, we're going to take a look at our full-time equivalents or FTEs as we refer to them. Here you can see that we did have an increase from 2016 going into our 2017, increased a whole 4.3 employees. And then you can see that it is flat going into 2018. Capital is another very important part of the budget and a very large area of expenditures for the town. Here you can see we have, I believe it's nine or 10 of our projects for 2018 that I've detailed here. We are proposing to spend a total of $15.3 million on capital during 2018. These nine programs represent about $10.5 million. The highest amount on there is the one and three-quarter million dollars that is going towards street reconstruction projects, which we all appreciate when we don't have potholes and also probably grumble about as we have to take detours. So from this view of capital, we also have another view of capital that shows the full $15.3 million. This shows all of the funds that we have capital expenditures coming out of. Almost every single one of our funds has some capital aspect to it. You can also see from this chart the types of expenditures or types of items that we use those capital dollars for. And then the next item is the contributions that the town makes to various community organizations. And we're proud to be able to propose continuing this. You can see from the totals though, that we've had to apply some reductions here, just like we've experienced some stress in the rest of the organization. We also have done a few cuts here and where the 2017 budget had authorized a $268,000 level of expenditure, we're looking now for, at 2018 for $236,000. The last item here is our inter-fund transfers. This gives you some sense of the money that moves between funds. We have reasons for all of them. It's not just moving money to move money. The two general fund transfers, one is going to cultural, one is going to our general debt service. The general fund typically is a recipient of transfers, but in this instance, there are two going out. The other fund that makes a considerable number of transfers is the Parks and Rec Fund. You can see they have amounts going to the general fund, the recreation fund and the Recreation Debt Service Fund. And with that, that concludes the presentation for tonight and I'll take any questions.
Council, do you have any questions, Mary Lou? Nope. All right, since this is a public hearing, let's open it up for public comment at 7:44 PM. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address council on this item. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close public comment at 7:44 and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 1.507 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Shop local.
Shop local by Stefan Parker. Next item up is Item 8C. This is Robinson Ranch filing number two, amendment number two, Lot 5, used by special review. And Paul, you're going to be the ringleader tonight? You're the one. Your beard's looking sharp, dude. Yeah, his, his does look good too. All right, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. The next item up on your agenda is a request for use by special review. The case number is Z17-010. The request is for a convenience store with fuel cells and car wash. And please note that the applicant has provided the notification affidavits stating that they have legally noticed this hearing. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Cockrell Drive and Parker Road. It's currently designated within the neighborhood commercial designation within the town's master plan. It's specifically zoned in the Robinson Ranch Plan Development for commercial uses. Within this particular plan development, a convenience store with fuel cells and car washes must receive a use by special review. The site itself is roughly 1.3 acres in size and the convenience store is roughly 3,800 square feet. Should the use by special review be approved by council this evening, staff is recommending a condition that the site generally be developed in accordance with this proposed layout. Again, with Cockrell Drive on the south and Parker Road on the west. Staff won't go through each of these individually, but there are nine approval criteria for a use by special review. There is detailed analysis contained within staff's report. However, this slide is intended to show that the request does in fact meet those nine approval criteria. Terms of responses from referral agencies, all referral agencies responded with either advisory comments or no comments. To date, staff has received one inquiry for additional information related to this request. There's no indication of support or opposition, just rather more information. With that, on November 9th of, of this year, Planning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend that Town Council approve, subject to four conditions, the requested use by special review for a convenience store, fuel cells and car wash. And that would conclude staff's presentation. However, we certainly are available for any questions you might have. The applicant is also available as well.
Okay, wonderful. Before we invite the applicant up, council, do you have any questions for Paul?
Not at this time.
No? Okay, if the applicant's here, this would be the opportunity to come down, if you like. Just don't trip. There you go. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chad Wheeler. I'm with Dimension Group. We're the design engineers for, for the owner. Our address, 5600 South Quebec Street, Greenwood Village.
Fantastic, Chad. Thank you very much. Feel free, anything you'd like to add?
Not much. Paul, as usual, has done a terrific job assisting us not only through this process the last couple of months, but, but presenting to, to Planning Council, Planning Commission as well as, as you all tonight, exactly what we're needing to get done here this evening. So we're really just available for any questions that you might have.
Fantastic. Council, do you have any questions for Chad? No? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:48 PM. If there's anyone here wishing to address council. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:48 PM and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve, I move that the Town Council approve the use by special review with this following, or subject to the following, or subject to the staff conditions contained. Jeez.
Motion by Josh and a second by Amy. Council, please vote. All right, motion passes unanimously. Scouts, for your information on what just happened here, there's three things, three ways stuff get done in the Town of Parker. Our zoning either is what's called a use by right, a use by special review or a not permitted use. Non-permitted use would be something like marijuana retail sales. That's not permitted anywhere in the Town of Parker. So if someone owned a piece of land and they wanted to sell marijuana retail out of it, there's no opportunity for them to come and do that because it's not a permitted use. A use by right, if someone owns a piece of land and it's zoned for a commercial and the, what they want to do is build a commercial building and it meets the requirements of our building code, then it's a use by right. They have the legal right to build it. And so staff would make sure that it meets those requirements. Use by special review is kind of like a use by right, but it's a use that might have a little bit more impact on our community. So there's nine extra criteria that the applicant has to come in and demonstrate that they meet to make sure it follows those guidelines. So that's what you just saw happen right now. So with that, we'll move to item number nine. This is Ordinance Number 3.147.7 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Section 13.07.120(c)(3) of the Parker Municipal Code concerning replats of lots or tracks. Bryce, the floor is yours. And I noticed that when I started talking to the scout, you went and sat down. Because you thought I was going to go for 20 minutes, right? So, anyway, Bryce, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As noted before you tonight is an amendment to the Land Development Ordinance regarding replats. The proposed municipal code amendment is intended to clarify Section 13.07.120(c)(3) of the Land Development Ordinance, which governs the replat process. This section states that if the planning director determines that a replat application is substantial, it shall be processed through the sketch plan, preliminary plan and final plat, final plat process. The proposed amendment adds the minor development process as a processing option. On October 26th, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended that Town Council approve the proposed amendment to the code. That concludes my presentation. As always, I'm available for any questions.
Council, questions for Bryce? I know Josh has one, so I'll get to him last because he's.
Bryce, I'm just going to ask you, walk us layman through it. What does it do? What are we doing? How is this helping the town? How is this helping the citizens?
So briefly, a replat is extensively moving lot lines around. If the planning director determines it's substantial, right now, the code says that they have to go through the sketch, preliminary and final plat process. Those processes are associated with single-family residential development. The minor development plat is, represents commercial development. So this is clarifying that if it is determined to be substantial, that it can go through the commercial development, minor development process to resolve the substantiality of the, of the replat.
Absolutely.
Is that helpful?
Sure.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Big words. Big word alert. Any other questions? No? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:52. Scouts, what you got? Just kidding. Like, what's a minor development plat? Public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to close public comment at 7:52 PM and I'll entertain further discussion and a motion, please.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 3.147.7 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by Debbie. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, we will adjourn at 7:53 PM. With no further business before council, we will adjourn at 7:53 PM. But wait, don't get up because...